This time I'll call to order the Planning, Zoning, Improvements and Committee Meeting, held today, Monday, July 28th, 5:30 PM. Michelle, can you call the roll for us, please?
Councilperson Azar.
President.
Councilperson Bowlin.
President.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. So I'd just like to make note, the committee members are the ones that will be meeting right now. The other council members you see present are cosponsors of the bill, so they're here to listen to you, just like all of us are. First of all, I want to say that there will be no public comment taken tonight. We do have some people in the audience that we may ask questions of. There will be plenty of opportunity for additional public comment. We have another meeting that we have already scheduled for August 20th. At that meeting, we will listen to all public comment. That will be at 5:30, right here in the same location. What my ask is going to be, if you're here representing a specific group or a neighborhood, maybe you all get together in advance of the August 20th meeting, pool your thoughts, and come with someone who would like to present. Whether it's a positive representation of your neighborhood, we'll accept anything that the public comment wishes to bring before us on that night. We won't commit to neighborhood spokespeople only, but in order to make sure we make best use of our time, that's what we're going to ask you to do moving forward. And I appreciate that. Thank you. The opportunity for anyone in the public to present ideas, recommendations, questions, concerns, anything, can be emailed to any of the committee members. You can also CC the council members on that. We want to hear what everyone has to say. We've been getting a few letters in, but I think as it comes closer to the decision that we're going to have to make on this ordinance, we'll probably be hearing from a lot of people. All of our emails are listed on the city website. A lot of our phone numbers are listed there. I think email is the best way for everyone to reach out to us. That way, we have a record, and we can keep better track of your comments that way.
Chairperson Bowlin.
Pardon?
I'm sorry. Chair Bowlin.
Yes.
Would you remind everybody that you can email city-council@terahoot.in.gov?
And that gets all of us? One email, and we will all receive it. Michelle does a fabulous job keeping all the communication together for us as well. Next, when we're going to allow public comment, we've already talked about that. The purpose of the committee meeting is only to make a recommendation to the council when we get to the point where we will be voting on this ordinance. We can make no recommendation. We can give an unfavorable recommendation to the ordinance, favorable with comments and detailed comments, favorable recommendation or favorable with changes. And then, at that point, we would also detail what those changes would be. The recommendation will be in writing. Motion will have to be made by someone on the committee and voted on by the committee. And so I, as the chair, will present to the council, not at the next regular meeting. We probably won't hear this before the council until September meeting, based on the next meeting being held after the council meets. So we want to take plenty of time to address everybody's issues. We don't want this to appear like we're making a quick decision. We know it's an important decision for us to make. We know there are some things in the ordinance, as it's been presented, that the public would like to change. There are things in there that the council would like to change, things that the committee might want to amend. So we're going to take all those things in consideration before we have a final ordinance to present to the council for a vote. So I think at this time, I'm going to open it up to committee discussion. As the committee wants to look at the ordinance, if we have any discussion amongst ourselves or any questions that we might want to ask. I've invited Tommy Kleckner to be here tonight. He is really the expert on the ordinance and how it relates to us and how it would work here in our community. So we may be asking some questions of him. Anything else I've forgotten? Committee?
If you've tried to email me at my city council email address, and it's bounced back, please try my home address or my actual address, booknation@gmail.com. We've had a problem with city email that's ongoing for kind of a long time. That's one of the reasons that Michelle is asking that you use the whole city council contact. And you can find that stuff on the way to contact everybody on the website. I think I'm not alone in having problems with my city council email, so.
Okay, this time, anybody from the committee have anything that they want to address that you see in the ordinance or any concern you've had from the public? Councilwoman Hinton?
Just kind of logistical questions relative to the commission itself and where it will be housed, how it will be staffed and funded. I know that if we have, is this going to be housed with redevelopment commission? Will it be its own space? And how will it be funded?
We need to know that. Was it housing of the ordinance enforcement?
Housing of the commission.
The commission.
Staffing of the commission, funding of the commission. Will it sit in another office that will create a whole new office for it?
Obviously, a lot of the questions, we're not going to have answers to tonight because we're going to be working through those same concerns that the committee has, as well as the concerns that the public has.
Can I try to put some ideas forward for that? So in other communities, there are a bunch of different ways to approach staffing this. In our community, the most likely place to staff it seems to be the engineer's office. And we've, I'm speaking from my experience with our sustainability commission, which may not be a fair parallel, because although there's a resolution on record that the council voted on a few years ago to create the sustainability commission, it's a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It doesn't create the whole legislative framework for the sustainability commission to operate. But we are supported through that sustainability commission by engineering staff. Maitri Desai has been doing it. Caleb, whose last name I can't remember, has helped us in the distant past and is getting ready to help us again with that. But they've all been employee, they are all employees of the engineering department, and that's also where building inspection and all of that is housed. As far as funding goes, the immediate need for funding would be to update the interim report, the 1980 document where Vigo County's historic assets were surveyed. And that is a document that the city uses whenever we're doing work that requires Section 106 review, which is a federal law that says that you need to look at historic resources before federal funds are used to redo something. That's one way that the interim report's currently used. It also informs our facade grant and used to inform our upstairs housing loan fund eligibility for the downtown C8 and C9 districts. So updating the interim report, the survey of historic resources for the community, is one of the first things and probably the only thing, other than tasking someone in engineering with helping this commission. Those are the, I don't think it's an added staff thing. It's certainly not creating its own department. It would be tasking an existing staff person with helping. And I don't know how much the exercise of updating the interim report costs. I don't have that number.
I see it making sense for engineering, but I think I also see a connection to redevelopment as well, because I see engineers as very technical, structural kinds of functioning, whereas maybe in a redevelopment office, it could be more thinking in a more social kind of aspect and understanding environments as well. And maybe a coupling of the two in some kind of way might serve us well. I've seen historic preservation offices either standalone or part of a Department of Metropolitan Development or part of redevelopment. I've not seen them in engineering offices, so to speak. But I do understand how engineering could play a key role.
Actually, that's a great idea. That's something that, you know, I've come into this with my own set of understandings about how Terre Haute government operates. But I know that you've got experience that extends beyond Terre Haute in Evansville redevelopment, so that might be the way to go.
And that's really the intent of this committee, is to figure some of these things out, continue to talk with the other entities that will be a part of this, and decide exactly what we want to do here, exactly what we want written in the ordinance, and then how it's going to work.
And it looks like, what page is this on? Section 10, 194.3, paragraph K. Each official of the city who has responsibility for building inspection, building permits, planning, or zoning shall provide any technical, administrative, or clerical assistance requested by the commission. Attorney for the city shall serve as the attorney for the commission, but they can always retain outside counsel. So the way it's written right now, I think, allows for a blending of different departments, just, you know, whoever the expertise is for, you know, that particular issue. I mean, we probably could get more specific, but that might be further down the road as we see how this actually ends up playing out. But I like that, the language as written.
Which section is that?
It's paragraph K, so it's technically, so page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So it's page 6, paragraph K.
Okay. Thank you.
And then it also gives the commission the authority to apply for grants, full title to property. I haven't, you know, done much research, but I'm sure, you know, one of the issues that people have been raising is how to make this more affordable for homeowners moving forward. And I would like to think that one of the main goals for the commission would be to apply for those grants and that type of thing, to be able to assist homeowners in, you know, following the rules of the commission. And again, it's, you know, it's very open-ended as to what they could do in terms of obtaining funding. Now specifically, I mean, does engineering have the manpower right now to, you know, have someone assist with this on a regular basis? And unfortunately, I think the answer right now is probably no. So, you know, maybe there would be some sort of grant. Of course, you know, that might be something, somebody else might know better, but, you know, to have some sort of part-time assistant or something to help manage with the paperwork and that type of thing.
Amanda, I know that over time, there's a huge amount of money for historic preservation through the federal government in so many ways, that homeowners can access, if our city could access some of that grant funding from historic preservation, that homeowners would get grants and not loans to help with any renovation, external renovation. But in our current environment, I don't know what that funding looks like, if that's a place that's been slashed and burned, what's happened with that kind of funding. But over time, I've seen funding that's available to cities and entities for homeowners, that they would not be put in a particular strained way to try to renovate their property or when they needed renovation, that they could get grants and not loans.
And it's, one of the ways that the city becomes eligible for that is by having an historic commission?
Yes. That's my assumption.
Should I ask Tommy?
And I do know, if we are designated, if we have designated areas, that we become kind of automatically eligible for those. Sure doesn't want to ask.
I don't want to interrupt, but I think that's something that Tommy can bring value to that question. If you would like to come to the microphone and maybe address that. Tell us who you are and.
Good evening. Tommy Kleckner, Director of the Western Regional Office for Indiana Landmarks. Indiana Landmarks is a statewide nonprofit historic preservation organization. Regarding funding, and I know that is something that the mayor is looking at, he's wanting to create incentives to encourage more investment in historic properties. Vast majority of grants that I'm familiar with are available to not-for-profit organizations. There are several historic rehabilitation tax credit programs available to privately-owned for-profit owners. There is a federal rehab tax credit available for historic commercial properties. It simply requires national register listing, local designation, is not qualifier, but it does ensure the additional layer of review for those projects to ensure the rehabilitation is done appropriately. Indiana also has a state residential rehabilitation tax credit. There's been a few changes made to that. It's now capped at $10,000 per applicant. But that is something that's available for the qualified rehab of owner-occupied historic residences. They're listed in the state register. National register listing is automatic listing in the state. So those are two programs that are available for privately-owned historic properties that are national register or state register listed. The grant program that the state used to have for privately-owned historic properties, funding was zeroed out just a couple of years ago by the state legislature, and that funding has not been restored. There's an effort to try to get the state commercial rehab tax credit back that could be paired with the federal. These tax credit programs, the commercial credits, tend to be used significantly by developers of larger historic properties. We've seen the historic rehab tax credit used with the redevelopment of the historic Hotel Demi to the Demi, the historic YMCA, the historic Miller Parrot Baking Company, and then outside the city, Owens Hall there at St. Mary of the Woods. So that is a program that has been used fairly extensively here in Terre Haute. But again, I know the mayor is looking at how to improve or enhance the existing facade grant program and other opportunities to incentivize preservation.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a couple more questions?
You just might as well just stay up here.
What type of staffing have you seen in other cities that have historic commissions?
It sort of runs the gamut. There are communities that have designated staff persons for their historic preservation commissions. That is the role and responsibility. Some communities have assigned staffing responsibilities to existing staff. It has ranged from economic development or redevelopment departments, engineering, building inspection. There are some communities where the commission really does not have a staff person. Those are the communities where the commission tends to be fairly inactive. There's not been as much activity towards protecting local resources through local designation.
See?
And I was going to say, there are some that have contracted that staffing to outside entities.
So you have seen the blend of engineering and inspection, redevelopment, kind of working together to help staff the commissions?
I've typically seen it just a staff person within one of those departments.
Okay, as opposed to multiple?
But as you'd indicated, a commission can call upon the expertise and other city departments should the need arise.
Did I hear correctly that there is funding available for the survey, the historic survey to be conducted, that that would not be a city cost?
There may be funding assistance. The Historic Preservation Fund, which is the statewide preservation grant program that's administered by the State Historic Preservation Office, has in the past helped fund surveys. They tended to be entire county. The State Preservation Office has been a little shy of funding city-specific surveys, but it isn't disqualified as a possible project. And so that is something the city of Terre Haute could look to pursue Historic Preservation Fund grant to help fund the survey. That is a 50/50 matching grant, so the city would still have financial commitment towards that, but it would help double funds on hand potentially.
So we would be more likely to qualify for that if it was a county-wide survey versus city?
The State Preservation Office typically has funded countywide, simply because they are able to get that much more in terms of resources brought into the fold through that survey. But again, Terre Haute being one of the larger communities in the state, I'm not saying that a citywide survey here in Terre Haute wouldn't qualify. I would probably encourage the mayor or city staff make contact with the State Historic Preservation Office staff to inquire about that and how such an application might be strengthened.
Thank you.
Tommy, while you're up there, do you have a sense of how much it costs?
I don't. I've inquired with the city of Bloomington, I've checked in, trying to get the cost. The city of Carmel surveyed the city after it adopted a preservation ordinance and established a commission. The city of Bloomington has resurveyed the city, I believe, two or three times since its interim report was published back in the 1990s, but I'm not sure about the cost.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, not so much of you. Maybe to you, I don't know.
Let me let Brandon address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor, your name was referenced many, many times, so we'd like you to have an opportunity to comment on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowlin. And on note of the federal funding, we have gotten a dialogue from our federal lobbyists. The 2025 funding for historic preservation for the fiscal year, for the entire United States, was about 180 million. Those funds are being withheld. It's going to be lowered down to 11 million. And again, those are nationwide, so that is some of the initial conversation we've been looking at, at the federal level. We will reach out to the state historic preservation. I will admit, I have not done that at this time. But I know that there's a lot of conversation about these grants, and it is worth noting that those are becoming more and more difficult, and some of those pots of money are completely being reduced, which also goes in hand-in-hand with the conversation about redevelopment. We are also looking at a CBDG and home cut, which is going to affect, at some point, you know, we have to have the conversation around our staffing. So there are several different cuts taking place in terms of the staffing side and the grant-based side, before we even, you know, really start speaking about homes, you know, private homes, I might add.
Mayor, could you, I want to make sure I heard those numbers right when you were talking about a federal grant.
Let me get my phone.
Oh, okay. It's just, because you had said currently it's 180 million for the country currently being withheld. Did you say, this is where I wanted to double-check, did you say that was expected to drop from 180 million to 11 million?
Incorrect. The number appropriated for fiscal year '25 under the Historic Preservation Fund was 188 million. That has been, it has not been released. And then the Historic Preservation Fund under the proposed, the term they use is a skinny budget. That's a federal term. I'm not quite sure what that means. That is looking at being reduced, it's going to be reduced by 158 million down to 11 million. So doing the math there, that means it would be, had started at about 169. But that's through that Historic Preservation Fund. One big concern that I have been seeing as it pertains to conversations around the tax credit program, which I do think is a good program, there are some administrative requirements that, I'm not going to comment whether or not those are difficult, but there are administrative requirements that would need to be addressed with the individual homeowner. So that's where we have received some feedback of, hey, I acknowledge that there's tax credit programs. What I don't want to do is do a tax credit program. I simply want to renovate a home to the ability that I can afford instead of waiting until a tax return may or may not happen. So we are evaluating what programs are available today and trying to maintain an understanding of the very frequent conversations in DC about what programs would be available for fiscal year '26, which is admittedly speaking, very difficult.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
One other thing that we, that you just heard us discussing is staffing.
Yes.
What do you think could be done from a city side on staffing a commission if this were passed and then you were to appoint one?
Yeah. So from a staffing standpoint, full disclosure, a number of departments will be going through a staff reduction over, from this year to next year. Those are some folks who have retired, whom we will not be replacing as we work to address some of the budget shortfalls over the coming years. And I think we've gotten to a pretty safe area there. The engineering department itself is actually being pulled, some members of that staff, from the general fund to engineer non-reverting, which basically means, for those listening or those who aren't in municipal budgets, our engineering department is slowly being funded by building permits, right-of-way fees, and inspection fees instead of property tax. That change has allowed us to begin to properly staff the building inspection department. However, I would argue, I know Jason's behind me, I'm sure he would agree, that that building inspection department still is not what it needs to be. And I think if you drove around our community, you would agree with that as well, and I understand that. But one word answer, do I believe we have the staff today to do this the correct way? No. I do not believe we have the current paid, full-time staff to do this. Am I open to looking at other opportunities? I am, but ultimately, I have to ask myself is, if an ordinance is passed, whether it be open with opportunities or, you know, whatever that language is, I have to follow that language to the fullest extent, and I do not believe we have the staff to do that today. Appointing a commission, whatever it may be, Sustainability Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, Redevelopment Commission, I am confident that there are people in any community of 60,000 to sit on that commission. The question that I'm answering, though, is, when it comes to the full-time role for that organization, I do not believe we have that ability today. Having spoken to other cities, Indiana cities, how they handle it, as well as the workload tied to an ordinance like this, I do not believe we're set up for that today.
We're on the cusp with our engineering department. You know, this council has moved a number of positions, as you mentioned, into non-reverting. So as you mentioned, they're basically becoming self-funding. And we've approved the expansion of engineering staff, too, at your request. This ordinance that's before us is not alone in ordinances that are before us that would require engineering and city staff support. We've also got a rental registry forthcoming. We've also been presented with a property maintenance ordinance. And I understand that those have come from within the administration, and this, to you, probably feels like it's coming from without or outside the administration and being done to you instead of with you.
I would agree.
I am, I'm curious if you have any thoughts on how we can all work together to we can all work together to achieve our mutual goals?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Councilman Nation. I think, not to answer a question, but to address some of the comments, the property maintenance, if you look at that and the rental registry, combined with the software and addition of a building inspector are attainable based off of our rental housing units and how that ordinance is written. So I believe we do have the staff in place for that. And I think, when you look at what that ordinance is trying to stop versus this ordinance, I do see similarities. I do. And I will also admit, they are not the same ordinance, and I get that. When it comes to historic preservation and this specific ordinance, my concerns are, honestly, we tell people we're doing this and some folks get happy because they want it, and then what's happening now, what's already happening, is the Engineering Department and the mayor's office phone is ringing off the hook because the amount of uncertainty tied to this. This is why I advocate for ordinances to be written with the administration, so that way staffing and some of these questions can be addressed beforehand. And it's getting to the point where there are builders who are openly have admitted that they are slowing their construction and they are concerned about projects, even though I can assure them, well, that home obviously is not subject to this ordinance, but the uncertainty around it creates second and third order effects from a staffing perspective. What I think, where I think we should go is, I, I do like this survey because there are buildings that have tried to get federal funds that aren't on a survey because the survey is old. And honestly, if you're a building owner or a private property residential homeowner, you can say, okay, thanks for the survey, I'm not filling out the paperwork, I don't want to be on the federal list. Great, that's, that's your decision, right? So I do see benefits to the survey, and I would also ask that we really focus on the specific blocks, the amount of people who we can say to the rest of the city of Terre Haute, this is created because 100% of people on these X number of blocks want to do this. Because that, that uncertainty of saying, hey, you know, we're going to look at these neighborhoods, is leading towards neighborhoods even, you know, in and around mine, which is predominantly newer construction, saying, hey, is it 1950, is it not? We have one of the oldest housing stocks in the state of Indiana, and I do believe that we should have some preservation, but the amount of uncertainty is creating some conflicts with the city staff. And my second point here is, I firmly believe that there are sections of town where 100% of people want to do this. And we could work with creating, you know, work with them and create a map saying, okay, what we drafted is where these homeowners want this and the rest do not. I, I fully believe there's a path to land this plane where the folks who want it, who are, a lot are sitting to my right, and some who don't, a lot are sitting to my left. We always separate like that in these conversations, where we can land a plans, the plane saying, these number of individuals on this block, they want it, and then we put guardrails to where if other blocks want to come in, they have to show unanimous approval.
Thanks. If it, if it's okay, I'd like to ask Tommy to address a little bit about a broader statewide view of how many cities and municipalities have this kind of tool in place? And when, of the ones that do, is this a, a community-wide thing? Do thousands of homes end up on these, on these, in these protected neighborhoods? Or is it more in the order of dozens or hundreds?
As far as the number of communities that have a Historic Preservation Ordinance on the books, it's just over 60 in the state.
In Indiana.
Most of those have at least some local historic districts that have been created through ordinance by city council or town board. There are a number of communities that have had an ordinance on the books for some years with no local historic district as of yet. Again, the ordinance before you is an enabling ordinance and simply allows the city to create a commission and then give that commission its responsibilities and the processes by which it works. It is up to that commission to make recommendation to city council, and city council by separate ordinance to create a local historic district. So we have communities that have not worked through that process all the way. As far as communities that have been active with commission and working towards protection, familiar with Lafayette, Lafayette has done a good job of protecting core areas of historic districts, historic areas. But in looking at a map of the city, it's a bit of a smattering in terms of the total number of historic resources within the city, sort of a smattering of those, but they focused on building critical mass within specific historic neighborhoods. It has a lot of locally, or single-site historic districts. Bloomington, also a lot of single-site historic districts. Kokomo, many of its local historic districts are single-site. And other communities, they've looked at single-site, property owners who voluntarily have requested designation. The legislation, the state-enabling legislation, does allow for designation of a property if a property owner objects. It's been upheld in a court of law across this country for decades. Historic preservation, the preservation of historic resources is public good, so that has been the case. But in most communities, city councils, town boards are looking for support of property owners who will be affected with a local designation, will be in a local historic district.
And I, I think it's important to underscore the fact that what's before us is an enabling ordinance that, as Tommy said, enables the, the city to form a commission. The state code that enables this states that the mayor will appoint all members of that commission, no matter how big or small that commission is. And then, applications are brought forth, and they're heard by the commission, and whatever they determine comes to the city council for a vote to designate. So it's important that our mayor be in on this, understand it, and be willing to appoint people who are able to do this and willing to play this role for, for the city of Terre Haute. And it's also important to note that this will be ultimately, or any decisions that come out of this and designations are ultimately by vote of the Terre Haute City Council. It's not by vote of the appointed people on the commission. I imagine that some of the examples that Tommy's aware of, of communities where the, there hasn't been much action, even though this, a version of this ordinance is on the books, I imagine that that's due to a lack of, we'll call it, support, whether it's support at the mayoral level, or at the council level, or of staffing support, because those are a lot of hurdles to get over, especially for a community like ours who really is starting from zero on this. What we've got is what we've always had, which is nothing. So any step forward is beyond the voluntary system, which has gotten us where we are today. I'll yield.
Thank you.
Well, I had a question, but I think that, I think Todd answered a couple of them. I did not realize that the appointment of the commission members was a state code, that the mayor has all seven appointments.
You know, when I worked with the model ordinance that is crafted by Barnes &amp; Thornburg in Indianapolis for Indiana landmarks and has been updated each time the laws around this legislation change at the state level, that was one of my first observations. I said, you know, we, we, the city council, make consequential appointments to boards and commissions every single year. And there are some boards and commissions, like, for example, the Board of Public Works and Safety, that, under Indiana code, all members of it are appointed by the mayor. And my first question was, well, why can't we appoint four of them and let the mayor appoint three, or vice versa, or, you know, if it's going to be a seven-person board, because there's some latitude in there, too. And the answer is, because the farther you stray from the Indiana code that enables this whole framework to be put in place, the weaker and less enforceable it gets and more vulnerable to lawsuits by people who are aggrieved by it. I think that we all leap to the conclusion that we're going to be the aggrieved parties. And that's really, I think, that no mayor wants to go and upset a bunch of homeowners. No councilperson wants to go and upset a bunch of homeowners. No chamber of commerce wants to go and upset a bunch of homeowners. We're all trying to move things in the right direction and get buy-in and investment, and this isn't, these things work together. But the answer is, George, that, again, the farther away we stray from what's in the enabling code at the state level, the less enforceable it becomes, which is why what's before this council has all seven members appointed by the mayor.
With three advisory, non-voting members that can be approved by the city council.
The...
According to what this says.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I don't think anybody wants to, to establish any kind of an ordinance and have unintended consequences. So, you know, we do have four against, like the mayor said, and I'm with Tammy that, you know, we would like to, as a committee first, hear from, from the neighbors and the associations, what questions and concerns you have for what we're, we're planning on doing. And if it takes a month, two months, six months, whatever it takes to do it right, that's what we need to do. You know, I've been on this council 25 years. I had hair when I started. And, I did, didn't I, Mick?
No, you didn't.
And I've seen times where we've passed ordinances and there have been unintended consequences that happened, and we've had to go back and review and do it over, change. I just think this is very important, and pro-con, whatever you are, I think this, this, this committee and then the full council needs to hear all those concerns so that we can come up with something that we feel is in the best interests of everybody. We're never going to satisfy everybody, we always know that, you know? There's not, never going to be 100%, but I think we need to try and at least satisfy the majority on both sides of the aisle. Are you?
Anyone else have any questions? Committee?
I have a question for our legal counsel. The way I'm reading this, you know, I know there's been concerns raised that, you know, these are just, you know, seven people that no one voted for, appointed by the mayor. You know, what if they start becoming very restrictive and just, you know, go off the path? Is there a recourse, under the way this is written, for homeowners if the committee finds that some renovation they're trying to do is not conforming and they don't grant them a letter of appropriateness? Does a homeowner have some road they can go down to, to fight that?
Appeal.
There's a built-in appeal process, sorry, I'm jumping in. There is a built-in appeal process.
Well, I'm asking our legal counsel because I, I want, you know, everyone out there listening to, to hear this, you know, straight from...
No, there is a built-in appeal process. Yes.
Actually, I was just reading Lafayette.
Yours, reading what?
I was reading Lafayette, historical.
Oh.
And they were talking about who was on their appeal process, made me want to look at ours, so that's why I jumped in real quick.
Do either of you know how that appeal process would work with this current ordinance?
Pulling it up, one second.
Thank you.
The way I'm reading it, any person of party agree by decision the commission shall entitled judicial review in accordance with Indiana Code 421.5-1. That's the, basically administrative review law. So my understanding would be that if the commission votes in a way a homeowner doesn't like, they would actually file a case in one of the local circuit courts, asking for the judge to review it. Would that be accurate, Mike?
That's my idea.
Okay.
I just, you yield?
Oh, I yield, sorry.
Just, just a, just a question and clarification. Is this just affect residential or commercial also? This particular ordinance? For historic?
I just, we've talked about this before, Tommy and I talked about this, and I think that the historical district is established based on the survey, so it wouldn't matter if it was residential or commercial. Whatever the survey shows us is what would, this ordinance would apply to, is that right?
Yeah, the ordinance takes a broad approach to historic property or historic structure. Could be a commercial building, could be a residential structure, it could be a landscape. I'm thinking the Ohio Boulevard, the boulevard there. It could be a historic park that could be designated as a district that has historic structures within it, Collet Park or Ray Park.
And then, for example, downtown, that could be a historic district. I mean, I know that our, our building is on the National Register, historic. So my concern, my one concern on that, and I don't know the answer, and it may not even be a concern, if something were, if that were, let's assume that it's a historical district and three or four of the buildings are designated as historic buildings. Let's use the terminal, for example. The beautiful mural they have on that building. Would this prevent them from painting the building?
Not necessarily.
It's got in here alterations, designs.
Yeah.
So I'm, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. I can't speak for a commission that doesn't exist.
I understand.
When a commission recommends local designation to city council, if city council approves that ordinance and that local district is created, the commission can develop design guidelines for that district. That can include murals. There are a lot of commissions, they're starting to revise design guidelines to include murals because murals have become very popular. Oftentimes, they are going on the sides or, or rear facades of historic masonry structures. So they're starting to address that. There are a number of, Lafayette, the commission has had some experience with murals. They've approved those murals. They typically, they're not looking at the art itself, art is subjective, they're looking at what the mural, the, the material, paint, whatever it is, how it's being applied, how the surface is being prepared. That's typically what a commission is going to be looking at.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. I had a couple of questions, people asked questions like that, and I want to try to get that addressed. Thank you.
If, if I may, just a little more. The specific example of the terminal is interesting, that east wall that now has a mural on it... That east wall that now has a mural on it had a building against it, which you probably remember, George. I think it was a two-story building that went all the way to the corner at Ninth Street. And when that building was torn down, there was an exposed party wall like, you know, we have on many buildings that are next to buildings that have been torn down, that survive. And that east wall of the terminal has had, I call it stow, effus, a cementous surface put on it, and that's what's being painted, not a brick wall.
Our, our, front of ours is the same way.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, certain restrictions, you, you know, you don't want to, some of the emails we've received is, it's going to be so restrictive, you can't do this, you can't do that, so that's what we've got to be aware, aware of.
Yeah. You know, one thing that I think can't be said often enough about this is, this doesn't stop you from maintaining your property, from repairing your property. If you have a house like mine who, that has shingles on it, and the shingles are falling off in places like mine, then you repair the shingles, you know, you can put them back on, on the, as siding. And so, and if your windows are in need of repair, you continue to repair your windows. I mean, nobody's going to come and say, you can't repair your, your, your house. You need to change it back to something that existed at some arbitrary time in the past. You and I have both been through a design review process when we did commercial facade renovations on our historic downtown buildings. And, you know, with mine, I blew out the whole 1940's shoe store facade and worked with an architect to design what's there and rebuilt it after, having it reviewed by staff of redevelopment and so, and representative of Indiana Landmarks and architect who had, has volunteered to do that, served that role. And you navigated the same process, and both of us have, I mean, my experience was fine. Nobody told me...
Right, that's true.
Nobody told me to change what I was proposing, nobody told me to spend more, nobody told me to, that I couldn't paint it a certain color, or any, you know, or any of that stuff. So I guess for me, that's taken a lot, that just having navigated the one piece of review for his, for renovations to historic buildings bureaucracy that we have in place in Terre Haute, which is tied to an incentive to, to do it right, after having done that, I am not afraid.
Yeah, no, I just...
Because everything that I've ran into was people trying to help.
Yeah, they want you to succeed, they don't want you to fail.
They want to say yes, they're not trying to start a fight.
All right, if anybody on the committee doesn't have any further questions?
I don't have any more questions, but I think that we, you know, we, we're getting information and emails and calls from residences, and I think there's a lot of fear, and I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to take our time and try to allay those fears for both residences and developers who may come into our community. So as we continue to move forward, we just really need to figure out what, if the fear is real, is the fear a fact, or is it a feeling? And so if we can make sure we have ample data and information to provide to, to residences and to developers, it's, it's going to be important. I yield.
Thank you. Counsel, woman, Thompson.
Along those same lines, a lot of the concerns I'm getting are, am I going to get fined because my kid's toys are in the front yard? I have windows that are falling apart, am I going to be able to replace them with modern vinyl windows? You know, real dinner table issues and details that I think people are concerned about. I think it would be helpful to actually hear directly from another historic commission so they can give us a day-by-day, these are the types of requests we're getting in, this is how we process them, these are the guidelines that we've set out, so that people can see, you know, not just what's on paper, but how this is actually implemented. I don't know if that's something we could try to put together.
I, I've actually reached out to a couple of commissions that are already functioning to find out what their issues were when they started and the issues that they have, as they work through them, and they've been willing to come talk to us, so.
So they'd be willing to come and put on a presentation?
I'll have to ask about a presentation. They were willing to come and talk to anybody who had any concerns.
Or a Q and A, yeah, Q and A for the public.
I'll, I'll try and follow up on that, see what we can work with. So right now, I know parliamentary procedure went out the window about five minutes into this meeting, but I think it's more important for us to have the kind of discussion that we've been allowed to have tonight. So now I want to ask the sponsors of the, of the ordinance if they have any comments or questions. Which is all the council members who are not sitting at this table.
Madam Chair, committee members, one thing I do want to mention, and it's something that came up in some conversations we've had around this...
Excuse me, we need your name.
Sorry. Name and address. Indiana Code 3671123, which is part of the enabling statute that allows us to do this, includes language about removal of a designation that provides a process if a certain percentage of the community, of the neighbors in that area, want to be de-designated, there's a process to go for that, through that. That was omitted from our language, and I'd like to see that put back in. I think it was just a mistake that we missed when we filed it, because I think there are a lot of concerns about this being pushed on people, so I want to make sure that people understand that, that that's not our intent here. So I believe that'll be at least one of the amendments that'll be offered if this goes back to full council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, councilman nation? Final comment?
Tommy, before we adjourn, could you address the Phase One and Phase Two parts of how, how that piece of the ordinance operates? And what you've seen in other communities, respect to that?
Sure. When a commission recommends designation, the commission can recommend that that designation take place in a two-phase process, or city council, when considering an ordinance for designation, can decide to approve that ordinance with a two-phase designation. In the two-phase, the first phase designation is what I kind of refer to as historic district light. The only activity that would be reviewed by a commission is demolition, new construction, or moving of a structure. At the end of that three-year period, if a majority of property owners within that local district do not object, the district would become a full district with the additional protections that a full district would have. If a majority of the property owners object, that would remain a Phase One district indefinitely. So that would be the only activity that's reviewed as part of that. There are a number of communities that have designated a local district through that two-phase process, and some of those districts have remained Phase One districts at the end of that three-year period. And so there, there are Phase One districts that have been in place for quite a few years now. Is that, answer your question?
And Tommy, before you go, is, we've talked about a number of different facets of this. Is there anything else that I'm forgetting that we haven't discussed yet today?
I...
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
I, I would say, as far as the, the ordinance mechanics and everything, no. I do have concern about the ordinance having been filed as an amendment to city zoning code. Since, as it's been made aware, local historic district designation has nothing to do with land use, it is designed. And so the concern that this filed as an amendment to zoning muddies those waters, and it's just something I would hope committee would take into consideration, have a conversation, and see if, you know, recommendation might be made to council that it be filed. I don't know how that process takes place, but that's a concern that, that it was filed as an amendment to zoning rather than as a separate chapter.
Thank you, and I would turn to our legal counsel on that. I know that that wasn't your call, Mike, when the determination was made to put this in Chapter 10 under zoning. But I am curious, and it's not something that you have to give us, render an opinion on right now, but I am curious about how it might be refiled in a different part of the code to make it clearer that this is not part of zoning.
I'll look into that.
Thanks, I yield.
I'll just jump in, it would have to be withdrawn and refiled, and someone would have to decide which chapter.
Michelle, help us with this. Typically, who makes that decision?
Legal. I keep looking at him.
Nope, all right, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't realize you were here.
As soon as your name got mentioned, you got access to the microphone.
Welcome.
Thank you, councilman nation. I'm Mike Wright, City Attorney. I, I think there was some collaboration that went behind that decision. I think I understand the, the points that are being made about the differences. I think it was because it related to, you know, it was similarly situated to a zoning request in that you were asking to do something before you started, you know, before you set about going to do the project, you had to get permission from the commission to, so that similar process was, but it's not anything that's hard and fast, and if it makes more sense in another section, then that's totally appropriate.
It's my understanding that some communities just have their own section.
Yeah, I mean, and that is, you know, it would just need to be filed as an ordinance creating that section, right? But, yeah, the, when Michelle and I talked about it, it was primarily a process analysis as opposed to what the historic preservation is doing versus, you know, permission to do something on your property like a zoning request. So I see that distinction.
And, and I understand the, the similarity or parallel, if you will, between what this looks like and the area planning commission and the process that, that things go through for land use decisions. So I get it. But this is something that has been pointed out to me, that, that we have more latitude than it might seem on the surface with where this goes within the city code.
Certainly.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience with me, I yield.
And I will just jump in, one, one of my comments to Mr. Wright was, if someone calls me and asks where to find it in the code, what's your first logical, because your building permits one area, but then you've got your demolition, then you've got your vacating streets, so we've kind of, over the years, thrown everything under Chapter 10.
It's huge.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Well, we're trying to fix that, aren't we?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. No, not tonight, and not in the next few months. Anything else? All right, so I really, 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 I know you probably came expecting to make public comments, I appreciate y'all showing up tonight. Stay vigilant, stay, stay in tune, keep talking to us, let us know. We're going to continue the conversation. This will, the only thing that will be on the agenda at the next council meeting will be to talk about what we're going to do moving forward, there will be no vote taken at the next council meeting with regards to passing this ordinance or anything else. So the next meeting of this committee, public meeting, will be August 20th at 5:30 PM, right here in the same location. And again, we will take public comments at that meeting, but I don't think any of us want to sit at a four-hour meeting and hear the same thing over and over again. If that's what you need to say, I mean, if that's what you need to do, that's what you can do, we really, really like to get representation from the neighborhood, and then individual comments we'll also take. All right? So at this time, I'm going to kick it to George.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We have, we have George moved to adjourn, Candace and everybody else second it, all is in favor. Any oppose? Meeting's adjourned, thank you all.